Good evening on this election night. Regular Glendale City Council meeting of November 8th. May we have rule call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item.
Next item is the flag salute led by Councilmember Sinanian, and we ask everyone to remain standing for them.
Please face the flag and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we gather on the eve of a national election to conduct the city's business, but we pause to pray and give thanks for the blessings of liberty which afford us the right to make our voice heard at the ballot box. We have different opinions, we come from different backgrounds, but we are all Americans who want our nation to be strong and our children to have a bright future. So we pray that our votes will help move our nation forward. As we commit to our civic sacrament of voting, let us remember that tomorrow we will awaken to a new day, and whether we supported those who succeeded or those who will come up short, we will and we must work together to make this nation a better place for all. We give thanks for this most important opportunity. Remind ourselves that there is absolutely nothing wrong with America that cannot be fixed with what is right with America. Tonight, we do what is right by voting and expressing our views in a peaceful and civil manner. We pray for guidance and wisdom as we cast our votes, and most importantly, we pray for civility during this election. We pray for peace throughout our great nation. May America be blessed and our decisions today live up to her ideals. Amen.
Amen.
I would just like to add that if there's anyone out there that hasn't voted already today, you still have time, so please go to the polls. Next.
Agenda for the November 8th, 2016 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Friday, November 4th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And next.
Next item is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A. is agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, November 15th, 2016.
Beers.
Mayor Devine, members of the City Council. For the Glendale Housing Authority for November 15th, we have no agenda items, business agenda items. For the Glendale City Council meeting, this is to commence at 6:00 P. M. We have one item under consent. General Manager of Glendale Water &amp; Power, and this is to provide analytical laboratory services for drinking water and environmental compliance. And I'm sorry, we have two items. Director of Public Works, this is regarding the security guard contract. We have adoption of ordinances, ordinance adopting certain sections of the California Building Code as it relates to the Building and Safety Code of the City of Glendale. We have a number of action items. City Attorney, discussion of potential measure of mending city charter. This is relating to term limits for City Council members. Director of Finance, this is regarding the first quarter financial report. Director of Human Resources, this is a memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the Glendale Management Association Police Warrant Managers. Director of Community Development, this is regarding the Rock Haven, and this is the award of the request for proposal. Under hearings, we have Director of Community Development, this is regarding the 571 Cumberland Road. This is a Glendale Register nomination. Director of Community Development, 1440 Melwood Drive, this is also a Register nomination. And another one from Director of Community Development, this is regarding 1500 Flower Street, and this is a Glendale Register nomination as well. And lastly, we have Director of Community Development, 3620 Angeles Avenue, and this as well is a Glendale Register nomination. And that concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item is a consent calendar, including minutes, following a routine and maybe acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. And Madam Mayor, I should note that item 4D will be moved to November 15th meeting. 4D.
No. Pardon?
4D will be considered on November 15th, next week's.
I don't think so. I think that's incorrect.
Which one are you referring to already? As Director of Community Services in the parks, is that still on?
That's on for tonight, yes. That's still on.
My apologies. As you consider consent, Madam, we would ask and advise, as Ms. Beers read into the record, that the ordinance that deals with the Building Code is actually on next week's agenda.
7D.
That'd be 7D. And we would also, while we're at it, ask that you move item 8C regarding an introduction of ordinance for city procurements to December 6th through your regular meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So, we have the consent items. Do I have a motion, or does anyone want to?
I'd like to pull 4B.
Okay, 4B. Do I have a motion for the remaining? Remaining?
I'll move second.
Rule call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Can you please?
I'm sorry, one question. Is it 8D that is being moved to December?
7D.
7D.
7D?
No. Which one was moved to December 6th?
That would be 8C, sir.
8C. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. City Clerk, would you please read consent item 4B?
4B. 4B is Chief Information Officer regarding purchase of information, technology, equipment, and subscription, and maintenance services to support replacement of the primary internet boundary firewalls. B1 is a motion authorizing the purchasing manager to issue a purchase order with CDW Government LLC using competitively bid volume discounted pricing.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted Mr. Ganley to come up. We've heard quite a bit nationally about security for servers, emails, intrusions, hacking. Can you give us just a brief explanation about what sort of safeguards, without revealing the details to the Russians, on our server system? There is sensitive information that goes back and forth within our server, that truly, if someone were to obtain, it would give them an advantage in procurements, in bidding, in applications for services. So briefly, can you tell us how safe we are on our city server, and what this new equipment is going to do to us?
Yes, sir, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, and members of council. I believe that we are safe. There is no such thing as perfect safety, of course, and part of this item is to enhance the safety that we already have in place. We devote a great deal of time, staff resources, technology resources, and probably most important, education and outreach. So some of the things that we talk about quite a bit internally, don't click that link. A lot of the security problems that you see today, some of the email hacks, et cetera, that have been in the news, happen when you get an email that is from a malicious sender. Someone clicks on a link in that email, and something bad happens when that happens. So we go to great lengths to protect our email system from things like that. We screen out as many of those malicious type of emails as we can, and we make sure to follow up immediately whenever we have an incident, and do that user education. So we'll send out things like citywide messages saying, be aware that there are fake emails out there, with some common sense advice, things like if you see something from Verizon Wireless, for example, saying, hey, your phone's going to be turned off unless you click here. That's an example of something you might normally see. So we say things like, if you don't have a Verizon phone, that email is fake, so please don't click on it. If you do have a Verizon phone, but you did not give them your City Work email, then that is a fake email. Please do not click on it. So just urging caution, and that's one of the biggest things that we can do. Obviously, with this item, this is a purchasing procurement request for a firewall. This will help us do some reporting and some prevention. So we have quite a bit of things set up today to do prevention and to do response when something does happen. And I believe we are as safe as we can possibly be. This item will help us to be even more safe.
Okay. Perhaps from time to time, if you could come to council and just update us on our cybersecurity efforts, not on a, it doesn't have to be regular, but whenever you feel there's something significant that we should know about, either in terms of a warning, or of a increasing of our security, I think it would keep us all. We're in the unique situation that any communications that aren't city-related should be kept off the city server. And oftentimes, we have one device, and should I sometimes err on the side of caution and email on my Yahoo server some sensitive information, I imagine that that's putting at risk that information to be seen by those who are trying to pry. And some of our contracts are big. We have large contracts that come before us. So if you can just keep that in our forefront, that would be, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to come back and address council from time to time on that subject. Like I said, user education is the most important thing we can do for security prevention. And I would say, in addition to contracts, we protect payroll information, employee social security numbers, things like that, and we, without giving anything away to foreign nations, we go to quite a bit of effort to protect that information.
Thank you. That's all I had, Madam Mayor, on that item.
Thank you.
So if there's nothing else, I'll move the item.
Have a second?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item.
Next item, City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments?
First one. I attended with several of my colleagues the Homeowners Association annual event at Verdugo Woodlands, and I just wanted to congratulate them for having another wonderful event for the neighbors all to show up and celebrate each other, and spend some time together, and get to know each other a little more. So congratulations to the organizers and the board members of the Homeowners Association of Verdugo Woodlands, and of course, to everybody who attended. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. One else?
Just a quick comment, Madam Mayor. Last week, I spoke briefly about the transportation trip to Japan with Icarapit Transit, and we've preliminarily set a date in mid-January, January 17th, for a community meeting, probably a council meeting in your neighborhood, in which we'll, I'll further brief on that trip, and you know, work with my colleagues, including Councilmember Najarian, representing the MTA, and MTA staff, and Icarapit staff, and talk about transportation in Glendale in general.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association's meeting. It was a very pleasant day, great meeting, and for the first time, I won a prize.
I'm going to remember that.
I won a prize, yes. I also attended the Glendale Health Festival. It was a great success. I want to thank the Armenian Medical Society for organizing it. We had about, I believe, about 1,500 people attending, 1,500 to 2,000 people attended, but over 1,000 of them received some sort of a medical consulting, advice, or treatment. It was a great success, and it's growing every year, and I want to thank the city for accommodating and participating with this, in this event. Also attended Wilson Community, Wilson Middle School Community Meeting regarding the socrates that we want to organize, or we want to build, and we had parents attending, teachers attending, and they all expressed their comments, their concerns about the turf and questions. Also, we had so many positive comments about a father who came and said, you know, thanked the city and the school district for putting a joint project together for the children to have a place to go to after school, and stay away from malls, basically. He had teenagers, and he was talking about gadgets, and he wants to take them away from the internet and everything else. Also, there was an elderly gentleman who really was excited because he said he can't run anymore, that he would use the facility to jog or walk around the track at Wilson when it's completed. I have a little, I've done a little research on, last week we were talking about the homes that were built between 1900 to 1950s or 60s. I've done a little research through my title company that I work with, and there were 206 homes built from 1900 to 1910. From 1910 to 1920, 846 homes were built. From 1920 to 1930, 7,411 records exist today. From 1930 to 1940, 5,192. From 1940 to 1950, 5,049 records exist. And 1950 to 1960, 4,794. And from 1960 to 1970, 3,434 records exist at this time. So this will give us a little idea. These numbers are not written in concrete, basically. They can change because some might have been modified, or demolished, or what have you. But from this, this could be a little base for us to start looking into how many homes are, you know, they're still there, existing, and I think we need to do that in order to find out what is our next steps. And also, I want to mention the historic village and ask the city manager to please look into this issue, because some of these homes can be moved and placed in a park that's visible, is accessible, people can use it, and if the developers want to move it instead of demolishing some of these homes, and I'm not referring to the case we had last week, this is in general, overall, because there are some homes that are, they may not have any historic value to them, but they're worthy of being saved or preserved, so we can move them as well, and put them in a village-type environment in one of our parks. And finally, for Veterans Day being around the corner on the 11th, I want to ask our city manager to please, if possible, put some sod or grass at the memorial in Montrose, and that corner can use some help. If that's possible, I would really appreciate that, because everybody's asking for it, just that corner to be kind of updated.
If we're talking about just that area, as opposed to like the medians, that we have to move to drought tolerant because the government sort of, but that very small manicured area, if that's the council's directive, we can do it. It probably wouldn't be done in time for Thursday, but knowing that is something that's come up repeatedly, if that's the council's directive, we can have the Parks Division do that.
Just that.
There won't be a directive, so either we put it on the agenda, or the city manager's going to do it on his own.
I guess what I'd be looking for is a second from city council, so at least I know it's something that comes back.
Either we're doing it, bringing it to council, or you're going to do it based on a suggestion of council member.
You'd think he would have learned by now.
You would think so.
Week after, week after, week.
With that being the case, and considering the limited nature of this, I would be happy to do that.
Okay. Do you need a second? Does he need a second?
No, he doesn't.
Apparently not. Ever fearful of the scornful look of my learned colleague, I think this is something that we can do on a very limited basis.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I have for this week.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to, I want to address the community on a bulky item pickup, a year-over-year improvement. This is a continuous concern for all of us. I want to take a quick moment to commend our residents, first, and Public Works for stepping up to the plate and addressing dumping head-on. We all pride ourselves in Glendale's appearance, and partnerships between the residents and staff have really made great strides in reducing the amount of discarded items throughout our great city. One of our mitigation efforts involved identifying 10 dumping hotspots, and installing no-dumping signs to actively discourage people from discarding items at these 10 locations. While we're pleased to announce that those signs have made a tangible difference. The numbers speak for themselves. In the 10 locations last October, there were 93 items, and this October, this is just for the month, by the way, at the same location, there were only 59 items left. But you know that we have an increase, we have increased our bulky item pickup from last year, because we have had a 42% increase in the number of pickups. We have made two changes, and I think most of you should be very pleased about these, because we have added an extra truck and driver to our weekly and Saturday routes, along with augmenting our drivers with a contractor crew, whose team was responsible for picking up 366 items weighing over 14 tons. That's how much dumping is going on. Both these factors have made a positive impact on our bulky item collection efforts, and allow us to effectively serve the community. Finally, we are going to kick it up a notch, and this is why I'm mentioning this tonight, because we're going to go after those who illegally dump on our streets. Yes, dumping is illegal. We will be installing our first flash cams to further deter people from dumping unwanted items. These flash cams issue audio warnings, and they take high-resolution images of potential vandals and illegal dumpers. They are a proven deterrent. This flash cam will begin its tour on the west side of town, and then rotate to other hotspots as they pop up. So if you have bulky items that need to be picked up, please call Integrated Waste Management, make an appointment or get on a schedule to have those items picked up, leave them out on the street the night before. If you do not do that, and you are caught, you could be fined up to $500. So if you see bulky items that need to be picked up, or illegal dumping, or if you want to get a spot to report or to schedule, call 818-548-3916. Or download and use the MyGlendale app. We're standing by to assist you. A clean community is a healthy community, and we can all do our part to make Glendale as healthy as possible. So let's make this a team effort. When you see dumping, or you want to have something picked up, please call the number on the screen, 818-548-3916. Violators will be fined. Okay? I just want to make sure that you have fair warning. Okay? Thank you.
It's a flash cam.
Takes a quick picture. Correct, Mr. Ochella?
To the spots where dumping occurs.
That's right. It would be akin to like one of our traffic trailers, and you have it there, and it'll register folks that are dropping that material off, flash, take the picture, and we'll be able to utilize that information for those folks in those hotspots. We have a couple of them around town that, as the mayor indicates, we've been making progress, but this will kick it up a notch, that's for sure.
And I'm sure that people will want to avoid being fined, so please schedule that bulky item pickup. I'm kind of upset that Margaret Hammond isn't here tonight, because I know that this is her bailiwick, and.
I'm sure she's watching.
I hope so. I hope so. Did you want to make a comment, Mr. Garpetian?
Just a comment about trash pickup. You have the MyGlendale app, that you can also take a picture of a trash if you're driving on the street. You can take a picture, and it goes directly to the Public Works, and they can pick it up. You don't need to make a phone call, so that's the easiest way to do that. So even if you put the trash outside, take a picture of it, we'll know where that is.
Right. And I'm sure you'll be, you're welcome. I'm sure you'll be seeing this flyer on GTV6 with the number and MyGlendale mobile app in the next few days, several times a day. Okay? Thank you. And what's next, please?
Next is the community event announcements portion, three minutes.
Okay, and I have two cards. First, Lisa Roggio and Dawn Biggs. And I want to welcome Lisa Roggio back to our fair city.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you briefly about our upcoming Veterans Day. And I just wanted to share with you that the Veterans Coalition of Glendale and the Verdugos is alive and well, four years strong, and it's a tri-city coalition in which we have veterans, veteran service providers, advocates, as well as elected officials come and talk about the status of our veterans, and look for ways in which we can build an infrastructure of community support and a comprehensive continuum of care. And I think we are recognizing what we do by having there be community supporters that look at us and our city for what we're doing for coalition building and community-based organizing, for really being that support mechanism for our veterans and our military. And now I'll have Dawn talk to you.
Good evening, Mayor Devine, and members of council. This is a busy week for us in the veterans business, kind of in that, for some reason that I don't quite understand, because I'm not an ex-marine. Is there an ex-marine? This Thursday is the Marine Corps birthday, and they make a big deal out of it, so we're including it in our calendar. 241st victory of the Marine Corps, and thank you to the Marines. The next slide. I'm just going to talk briefly about some of the area events occurring on Friday. There was another one on there originally, but there's one this, actually this, no, it's not on the slide. I'm not real good with PowerPoint, and I apologize. It was way before, way after me. This Fri, Thursday, excuse me, at Lincoln Schools, Lincoln School is doing a special Veterans Day program, and they've invited veterans to attend and be recognized, and we appreciate that very much around the community, and so if anybody's interested in that, they can look into the Lincoln School website, or the school district website, and sign up to go. They asked for an RSVP on that. Some of the things in the area that we have had presentations for at our Veterans Coalition meetings, showing you that the Veterans Coalition meeting, while headquartered and led by Lisa and in Glendale, is an area-wide group that supports veterans' operations. 7:30 on Friday morning is a presentation, or a walk for veterans up to the Hollywood sign in Hollywood. We had a presentation on that, attempting to continue our mission to bring attention to the veteran suicides, which continue to be 20 to 21 or 22, depending on what you, what book you follow, a day around the country, and this is another attempt to bring attention to that, and following up with the Wellness Works Program in Pasadena. Real quickly, then, 11 o'clock at Forest Hill in Hollywood Hills, 11 o'clock in Burbank, Cambridge Park, 3 o'clock in the afternoon at Two-Strike Park, which is sponsored by our American Legion and VFW Post in La Crescenta, and our American Legion and VFW Post in La Crescenta, and participates with Crescent Valley High School ROTC. It's a lot of our local programs. And then a forum sponsored by Congressman Cardenas in Sun Valley about veterans' issues and veterans' programs. Lisa's participating in that, and so we just wanted to mention that. A lot of options for things for people to do. And if I might, the banner program is my other task tonight. As most of you are aware, we started the banner program about 10 years ago on Glendale Avenue. We traditionally have had up about 40 banners at a time. In those 10 years, we've taken a number of them down, we've presented them to people, we have put new ones back up, replaced ones that have fallen down, and after 10 years, most of them, the threads have come apart, and they're starting to come across... Come apart. So it was originally started by the city council through a generous allotment of funds of $30,000. John was right in the middle of all of that and knows it well, but the idea was that the citizens of the city would donate money to pay back the city that $30,000, and we don't have a good accounting of what all that came back, but a lot of money did. We had some major donations from various labor groups in the city and many individual donations. And why I'm here tonight is to ask the citizens of the city to begin to donate again, because that money has long since run out, and we do not really want to go to the city council and try to extend this program like that. This is a city-citizens operation that the citizens volunteered to assist with, and the citizens get to see the benefits of the banner program out on Glendale Avenue. We're down a little bit of money. We're down about 25 banners right now that are waiting to be rehung or to be printed and rehung, and we have a bill for that, but we're going to attempt to raise the money through private donations, and we want to make sure that the public knows about that. There's a slide up there now with... If you want, would like to donate, you can donate a check to the City of Glendale through the city manager's office, and they'll put it into the account, however it's accounted for within the city. And if they have any questions, you're welcome to contact my email information on that. Very important for the citizens to do this and to recognize that it's 10 years old, and some of those banners have started to come down, a number of them have come down, and we need to replace them. I have four new banners to put up, I have four to present to people, and I have about 20... 19 or 20 that need to be replaced, that are already down and gone. So that's kind of the status of the banner program, but I wanted to appeal to the public for donations and to try to get this back up in full steam again. It'll get back up, but the more donations we get, the sooner it'll happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, Chief. How much does one banner cost? So if you wanted to sponsor a vet, or sponsor a soldier or sailor, what would it cost?
There's a big variation in the amount it costs, because each time that the... Each time the lift goes up and down, it costs a certain amount of money, and if you do it in a bulk, then, which we're prepared to do in this next time, they always told us $400 apiece to start with, but in bulk it'd be less than that. If they're $200 or $300, I would assume would be probably around the range of what it costs to have the banner printed. It's two sides... It's actually two banners printed and sewn together, and then hung, and then the lifting process and the hardware for doing that. But they quoted us around 400 originally. Now it's in bulk, which is what we need to do now. It'd probably be around 250 or 300.
Good. So if we can have a number, I think it's an easier sell. Let's say 300, that...
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I mean, I don't want to set the price, but that's...
Does that sound reasonable, John? 300?
To sponsor...
Yeah, we're all kind of...
For pressure, John.
Yes, and it's not really set up as an individual thing. When one comes down, I get an invoice, we pay it, and it's usually around $150 to $200 for one banner. So it could... 300 would be a little too high, I think, but I can write something down.
So those that are watching, if they'd like to contribute, they can contribute any amount that they like.
Absolutely.
It will all go into a fund that will buy the banners, no matter what they cost.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Rolinda Beesmeyer?
Just waiting for him to... Okay. Good evening, Mayor Devine and members of the city council. As you all know, I represent the Glendale Youth Orchestra, and this is the beginning of our 28th season, and so we have three concerts per year, and so our first is November 20th, Sunday, at 7 o'clock, and we will be having, well, I hate to say, a silent auction at that time also, to help benefit our scholarship program. And so donations are always appreciated to the orchestra, because we are a 501(c)(3) organization, members of... Presenting members of the LA Philharmonic, and so, you know, our children are just magnificent. And so it's the best youth orchestra in the city, and I do encourage you all to go. And I always tell people about parking at the Orange Street Garage, and the parking is validated $4, and so you can't beat the deal. Tickets are $15 for regular admission, and then students and seniors are $12. We had to go up $1.50 to supplement our cost to the Alex Theater, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so I encourage you to come.
Thank you. Our next is V. Valen Fores. Valen Fears?
Hi, good evening. Oral communications, not announcements. I'm just going to read this quickly. I'm concerned about the water in my house. In my Paul Revere teakettle, stainless steel with copper bottom, every day I get a white wafer, flakes in my cough. I crunch them up and swallow. I did it for my benefit. I hope that people responsible for drinking water are really qualified and licensed and have to have continuous education in math skills, United States math. Most immigrants, just to get their paycheck, they will stay, they speak English, but they don't understand English meaning. U.S. does not have metric system, and that could create a major problem in everything. Not everybody can perform conversions properly. My question is, is our water safe? It should not be reacting to metals or heat. I don't understand it, so I hope someone out there will hear and do something about it. Question number two about the light bulbs that the city was handing out, and now you can buy them, these curly ones. We put them in, once we started buzzing, lights going in and out, we thought we'll have fire in the wall, or it would be a costly electric repair. Did the city really check it out? Maybe those bulbs are not compatible with the building codes in old homes. Maybe the wiring has to be rewired first. But, good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I had to come because I am excited. I went to the Glendale Health Fair this Saturday, and this is what happened to me. I find an amazing setting, probably better than the setting in LA Convention Hall downtown. Huge, tables covered in white, clean, as clean can be, chairs to sit down, signage out of this world. I did not have to run around like crazy. I was expecting to find some agencies trying to sell their product. Not so. I could not believe when I saw the specialist physicians seated in those departments, ready to talk to the residents. Real doctors. I think that every department was represented. Usually during my doctor visit, he doesn't even sit down, and is gone in five minutes. These doctors were in their white coats, sober, not smelling of liquor or tobacco, calm and stressed out, and not stressed out. They were all on time and ready. One came in late. They were not watching their clock, they were not selling anything. The only thing they did is offer opinion and advice. They were compassionate, attentive, not rushing, no matter how stupid my question was. I should have had the sign-in sheet. I'd like to finish. Two more sentences. I only remember DeMar Jean and Simon. This was a very good day for me. Glendale should be known for top doctors in California, men and women. The council should declare it so, but I cannot say that we have a top hospital. So that's all I want to... And the valet, it should be known, Glendale is the city of valets. How they love it.
Thank you. Can you give me your name, please?
Valentine.
Valentine, okay, thank you. You know, I've been involved in that health festival, and I know some of my colleagues have Mr. Garpetian, and it is one of the finest events that I think we put on in this city, and that that group... Well, we help with it, but that group does, and they do have the finest doctors, and I have to say, they all come from our hospitals, so that says something for those doctors as well. What's that?
And which group is that? Which group organizes?
I mean, I make a society.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Zern, if you can very quickly... Is the water safe? What's the white stuff in her teapot?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the water is absolutely safe. As you all know, we're required by law to test the water on a continuous basis, and each year we produce a very detailed water quality report, which is on our website, if you'd like to look at it. It lists all the various constituents and what our compliance levels are. I can only speculate, as the grandson of Irish immigrants, there was a lot of tea drinking in my family, and teapots, as my grandmother used to have them, accumulate calcium deposits, and that's the white buildup you'll see in there, and she had a good couple tricks on how to get that out, including vinegar. So that would be my guess without seeing it, but I can tell you our water is very safe.
What about the light bulbs? Could that be?
I don't know. I would only... I could only speculate. It may be some kind of an electrical issue within the home. The light bulbs have been very reliable, and we've gotten pretty rave reviews out of them, so...
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes the comments on event announcements. Next item.
Next item, adoption of ordinances. That's 7A's ordinance amending section 10.40.120 and repealing sections 10.40.130 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the establishment of parking meter zones and parking meter space exclusions. This was introduced by council member Garpetian on November 1st, 2016.
And I have a question. Does anyone else have a comment or a question? I have a question. I've been getting more complaints about the parking meters and not being able to read the parking meters. Are we replacing those?
The update... I'll have to defer to Mr. Galanien as to the update that we're doing, whether or not the visors that they have will deal with that, as opposed to the zone in which the parking meter is.
And are we putting these same meters in all of these positions, streets?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We are placing existing meter heads that we have in stock, so they are not new technology. But we are going through a pilot program with new technology that is claimed to have a better visibility, but we haven't seen it yet. So we'll give it some time, and we'll try it out.
When you say you haven't seen it yet, you mean it hasn't started, or you haven't put them in?
We haven't put them in, so we're working on a pilot program to have them installed in one of our parking lots.
Great. Can you give us an update on that when you're installing those, so we can maybe get some feedback from the public if they're seeing any difference?
Yes, absolutely.
Great, thank you. Thanks. Okay.
My colleagues don't have any questions. I'll move 7A.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman...
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item.
Next item is ordinance at 7B amending sections 30.33.120 and 30.33.220 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating accessory wall design in the downtown specific plan, Gateway and Broadway Center districts, case number PZC1622217. This was brought forth by council member Garpetian on October 18th, 2016.
Mr. Ochoa, do we have a report on this one?
We have a brief update for you, based on questions that we had received in the hearing, so if you'll indulge us, we'll have Phil Landsafame give an overview and kind of reset the table. Phil?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, again, this was an ordinance to change the sign code to allow any tenant in a high-rise building to have signage on the first or second floor, so that we could keep some track of what was going where. We suggested that we do this through a sign program. Couple questions that were asked, will we be trimming trees so that you could see signs? No, we will not. Dan Hargrove is here, Rubik Galanien, do you have specific questions about we do that, how we do that? But we do trim the trees in thin amount, but we typically don't say, well, let's cut the tree back so that you can see the sign. The second question was, how would this look? And so we have done some mockups. This is... This is 831.
Bill, would you rather?
This is 801, as it looks today. This is a mockup of what we could see, the maximum potential. This is what we staff feel would be appropriate through a sign program in those spaces, wherever somebody, if they're on the 10th floor, and the landlord wants to negotiate that through a sign program, they would locate their sign in one of these locations. The question was, what's the worst case? How would it look? We have looked at buildings of different architecture. This is the same building on the other side, again, a mockup of where we would see those signs. This is 330 North Brand, pretty flat. It has that panel where you could put signs. You see the bank sign there. Again, we have mocked up where you could potentially have signs. You could have signs today in these locations for first and second-floor tenants. There just aren't any there. This is 505, across the street, more columns, and in our mockup, we would want those signs placed between the columns at appropriate...
I'm sorry, this is what you could have now, or what you could have if the ordinance passes?
Well, today, the first and second floor could have something like this.
Sorry, do you have something to show us what the changes?
This is a change that we would suggest. It's basically the same thing.
But what's the... I'm sorry.
The difference is that you have a greater universe of people that might want the signs. So to the extent today that you are limiting signs on these two levels for tenants that are there on that ground floor and second floor, that is a really finite universe of possible users for tenants.
So it doesn't change, though, the number of signs at all, except that you're opening it up to more tenants, so you have more chance of it being on?
So in real terms, you are opening up to more signs, because it's a greater universe of tenants that possibly could take those signs.
Have we had an outcry for this change? I mean, have we had a lot of requests for the tenants above to be able to do that?
We've had some, three or four, over the years. A lot of times, you may have... Where we've seen it a lot is somebody that is a service company, their firm is on the 10th floor, and they want some exposure on the ground floor.
And do we have examples here in Glendale right now that have signs on both levels, first and second floor? Do you have any photos, or do we have any buildings that have those right now?
I know... I'm trying to think, is it 400 or 450 where Dyn Equity is on the second floor? They have a sign on the second floor. For the most part, those signs, we don't have a lot on the second level.
So...
But our current code allows it.
Right. I'm also thinking, like, you're showing them all along the building. There may just be like one. I mean, wouldn't that be kind of...
It could be. I mean, you may not have a lot of... You may not have a lot of demand. All this change will do is allow it to happen... I think the last one we had was a property at 4... Help me, 450? Or 500?
550.
550 North Brand, where, you know, a service organization on the 10th floor, 12th floor, wanted to have something on the ground to let people know that's where we are. We haven't had a lot of demand for it, but we have had some requests where you either have to ask for variance and make the findings, or say you simply can't do it. This merely allows the property owner and those tenants the opportunity to put a sign there.
Well, I think this is not a great example of what it could be or could not be. Right now, this is what... The amount of signage or the square footage of the signage is not changing. The only thing is, the tenants... There may be a tenant on the third, fourth, fifth floor, they're renting like four or five floors, they don't have one sign, and that's what this entire thing is for, the institutional owners to have the choice. And I don't think any of these buildings are going to do this, because if you don't say right now, there's a reason for it. So I think the only change here is tenant that is on the upper floors will have a choice, and that will be up to the landlord to grant that to them or not. That's the only change.
Through a sign program...
Right.
Again, we were asked, what is the worst case? We think, and this is the worst case of a sign program that staff could support. We don't think, as you say, we don't think that there's going to be a rush for it, but you will have, as Mr. Ochoa said, you have a larger universe of people now to market a sign to.
So we could have this.
No, I mean, this is... I think this is going to... Because today, on the second floors, there's not only one tenant, all these big high-rises, the second floor of these high-rises, or the first floor of these high-rises, there may be 20, 30 tenants. You don't have this many signs, because most of them don't require it. This is only for the landlord or the owner of the property, who spent, I don't know, over $100 million on this... On their property, to have the choice to give... Extend the courtesy to one of his large tenants to have a sign on the building. That's what this is about. You can have this today.
I guess I would answer the question, it's possible, but it's probably not probable. It's possible, not probable, because as you said, you could have it today.
An earthquake, it's possible, but not probable.
Again, so I wish I could answer the question for you, but I don't know what the demand is going to be.
Okay, any other comments or questions on this? Okay, so do we have a motion?
Do you have a card?
Oh, I do. Thank you. Thanks for reminding me. Bill Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Bill Boyd, 100 West Broadway. I forgot how colorful city council meetings were, and the comment about someone being sober caused me to stand up and pay attention in regards to the very specific and narrow comment, and I'll try and make it brief, but I think history is... It would be very... comment, and I'll try and make it brief, but I think history is, would be very valuable for you. I've had the good pleasure of leasing 10 of the city's 14 largest office buildings in the 80s and 90s, and a lot of the ones that Phil mentioned come to mind that I have leased. And to answer your first question, Madam Mayor, that the market itself, and I think Councilman Garpetyan referenced it, wouldn't allow such signage, when I say market, meaning these institutional owners, and the one I'm going to mention, at 550 North Brand was Clarion, Clarion Partners. They control over $45 billion in assets, similar to 550 North Brand. And why this is brought to your attention today is that we ran into a situation two and a half years ago when Hutchison &amp; Bloodgood, one of the city's, in fact, the city's second oldest company, Forest Lawn being right ahead of it, relocated to 550 North Brand and took one full floor in that building. And that landlord granted Hutchison &amp; Bloodgood the same signage it had granted to Morgan Stanley to have a sign on the, we call that the eyebrow signage, right above, right above the street level. So Morgan Stanley had a eyebrow sign for one full floor up in the building. Landlord said, Hutchison &amp; Bloodgood, you can have it as well. Well, that was, lease was done in 2014, through, much to their surprise and a landlord's surprise, the current code, if that's the correct terminology, didn't allow it. It had been changed over the years because I sat in a meeting in 1985 when 550 Brand was approved at this very, when we had the redevelopment agency. In those design meetings, the eyebrows were specifically designed for tenants in the building to have their names. Unbeknownst to the Clarion, the ordinance had changed, did not allow Hutchison to have its name. We went through all the right procedures, appeals, and were denied correctly because of what the statute says. So what we're asking, what we're hoping in the private sector, is that you allow, as Councilman Garpetyan said, the institutional landlord the right to put a name, if it is a two or three-floor tenant, to put their name. And Phil mentioned, Dyn Equity is a good example. They do have eyebrow, but they also have top-of-the-building signage. I think if I kept rambling any further, it would be repetitive and so on. Any question that I can answer?
I just want to ask, you mentioned the top, so the current code does allow the signs to be up at the top, so why would that not be just an acceptable solution?
Oh, well, it is, but in the market, the market doesn't give it for just a one-floor tenant in a 17-floor building. Now, they could, they could indeed. Typically, Nestle didn't put their name on the top, but I'm trying to think of, in the old days, Security Civic, Genstar Mortgage, there are some names that go way back where they did put their name at the top.
So in a situation like you're describing, where you have a tenant that took a floor and you want to give him the eyebrow sign, what if you had five different tenants on five floors that wanted the same thing?
Well, and that's where the market dictates that, I should say, I'm mindful that you can't be absolutes. It hasn't been done because it is not a market condition, and typically, the owner of this building, this building just traded, Prudential just sold that building, 101 Brand, and they wouldn't allow that much signage, because the institutional market is so keen on delivering what the market considers quality assets, that it looks garish, to use a word, with that, no one would ever do that much signage. I mean, that's another absolute.
You're saying no developer, no owner of those buildings would do that?
They won't do that.
Right, because you're talking about, and Clarion, and when they owned 550 Brand, they have since sold that, was a $45 billion firm, and they're a small player in the commercial market. That help? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you, the city manager, a question. Has this been done in the Glendale before, that we had a tenant on the third or fourth floor and they have a sign on the first or second floor?
I think that the one example that was cited is probably about it, and it's, it probably was done perhaps in error. I think that the fail-safe that you're looking for, and Phil points out that this is probably about the extent of the amount of signage that somebody could request on this type of building through a sign program. And when you do a sign program, that means that there is generally going to be a more holistic approach by the planning staff. So I would venture a guess that what you're doing by way, if you were to adopt this ordinance, is allow the market to apply pressure to say, we want signage perhaps in some of these areas. But don't, I want to, I want to give some degree of assurance, some balance for council, that what you see here is, again, that worst-case scenario. That isn't to say that the staff would necessarily approve that sign program. What may be happening through this is that we as staff, and the planning staff in particular, will be in the habit of saying no a lot. Right now, we don't necessarily have to say no a lot because that universe of possible tenants is quite finite. Now, it could be expanded, but just because it's expanded doesn't mean that by right they can do this. They do it through a sign program. So I guess that the worst-case scenario, as far as staff is concerned, is now we'll be in a position to be the arbiter of what is garish, to use that term, on some of these buildings. And so if you, if you, if you consider that the staff would be that gatekeeper, you can give the flexibility to the market, but trust that we will crack the whip on that market to ensure that the buildings don't look terrible.
What would be, what would constitute a no?
Sign program?
What would, no, what would constitute the staff saying no to a sign on the...
Well, I mean, we're talking about something that is, that is a function of taste at the end of the day, and I would be remiss if I didn't point out, what you see here today could in fact happen, could, if you had that many ground floor tenants and second-story tenants. So again, all you're doing by way of this ordinance is expanding the possible pool of people that might want the sign, but they still have to come through a sign program. This is a function of what was requested in terms of that worst-case scenario. If you believe that the design studio and the planning staff will regulate in good faith, knowing that the council doesn't want, and no disrespect to the folks in K-Town, something that is as eye-popping as what you saw in that initial presentation, then I think it's not as dangerous a move to approve this ordinance, knowing later on you can change the ordinance. But I will tell you that it puts the staff in a position of being that gatekeeper of what is appropriate and what is not appropriate. So if you, if you, I hate to use the term trust, Mr. Landsafame and his team, that they will be able to say no. And I think you probably do know that they say no on a fairly regular basis when it is something that doesn't quite fit what the council's vision is. So I don't want you to think that there is no check and balance, that just because you see this, this is what you're going to get. It still has to go through a pretty rigorous design review.
Even. My questions are answered. Anyone else?
No, my question was, is, has this been done, can they do this today? Has it been done? Are there any other buildings that they have this already, that tenants on sixth or seventh floor, they have, they have things? Because I think what we're missing here is that the amount of signage, the square footage of the signage is not changing. The number of signs will not change, it's just, right now, if you don't see that many signs, it doesn't mean that they did not request it and receive it, it's just, how many, how many signage requests did we receive from tenants that are on the third to 15th floor? Not many. But this would give the landlord, the owner of this asset, a choice to say yes or no to a sign, that's it.
Well, it gives the landlord that choice, but it also gives the city that choice, yes or no.
Exactly.
Because as you say, do you see this amount of signage today? No, but respectfully, the pool of possible tenants is less. So you're saying by way of this ordinance, we're going to allow a greater exploration of the market by the landlords and by the staff, so that your design studio will be the check and balance. And so what you may decide to do is move forward in this vein, maybe it's for a period of time. We report back to you in six months, or 12 months, or 18 months, whatever the case might be, and then you can revisit the issue. That might be the way to put your big toe in the water, to see, is this, is it going to be a proliferation? Or because the rigors of the taste and the appropriateness and everything else, and the cost, as the speaker had indicated, it's going to be, and Mr. Garpetyan as well, it's going to be a function of cost. The landlord isn't going to necessarily just say, I'm going to take all comers just because. If they do it, it better be for a pretty good reason and rationale by way of revenue. And so, you know, it may be worthwhile for the council to move forward in this vein, but do so, and then we report back to you on a fairly regular basis.
And we are positive that our code today does not allow this.
You had gotten an email from a former staff person, and the attitude that was, the belief that was portrayed there in the email was that, well, you can do all of this today, why are you having this discussion? I think that there is a difference of opinion on the interpretation of the existing code language, but irrespective, that's not even a word, regardless of whether or not there's an honest disagreement on the interpretation of the code, the fact of the matter is, this is the way, what has been explained tonight and previously, that is the way the code has been implemented. And further, the code was implemented in this same way even when that former staff person was on staff working here. And so I think the email that you got, respectfully, probably doesn't have a whole lot of bearing in this particular discussion. I think that the concept for council is, do you want to allow for tenants above the second floor to possibly engage in signage on these first two levels, the way that tenants on the first or second floor can engage in that signage today, the way that they can do it today, understanding that it all has to go through a sign program, through the staff. And as I say, if it makes you feel better, we can come back at regular intervals to see if this experiment is working or not.
Could that be like in a six-month variation, like every six months, bring a report back?
If that is the council's direction, sir.
If you see like 500 signs, like the very first example that we saw from Chinatown on one building, you can just reverse this overnight?
I would respectfully request that, that if we, maybe we do it six months, then 12 months, and then, then if, once we understand what the culture of the expectations are, maybe we don't need to bring it back on a regular basis, but certainly early on, we probably should.
But assuming, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, assuming, let's say, worst-case scenario, that in six months, it does look like Koreatown, or no disrespect, but, or whatever, Hong Kong. That means that people have made a major investment and ordered these signs and hung them up there, there's a certain expectation associated with what they've done, wouldn't be, wouldn't be unfair for us to then say, sorry, it didn't work out, we changed our minds, it's gone.
Well, I think it would be prospective.
Yeah.
Yes. You wouldn't tell people to take the sign down.
At that point, to continue that signage.
They could leave it up.
If it doesn't sound like a serious thing.
Councilmember Friedman?
The other thing to think about is because their staff will have discretion, whether staff has discretion on any kind of design review, if something's denied, don't be surprised if it makes its way to us, because, you know, somebody will say, well, hey, this is what I wanted to do, and your staff is being horrible, they're such a bunch of bullies, and they're just being mean to me, or a tenant will say that, or maybe, maybe a landlord doesn't want to say no to their tenant, and they don't want it, so they say the city denied it, and then you have a tenant coming back and coming to you directly and saying, the staff denied this, and the staff says, no, we didn't. I can, you know, given that there's discretion, I think that could be some expectations from tenants that...
Well, as far as I'm concerned, there's a lot of, I worry about any kind of ordinance that is maybe, could be, probably, hmm, don't know.
Or it's limited in time and involves an investment.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think we're ready for, are we ready for a motion or...
I just, I just have a comment. I think it goes to the property rights of the building owners. The style, the dimensions, the quality of the sign will still be reviewed by staff. The only thing that's different is having on the first floor, on the eyebrow or on the second floor, rather a tenant that is on the first or the second floor, someone who's on one of the upper floors. So I don't see there's any aesthetic issue here. The only possible impact could be some confusion on the part of the public as to where that business is located, what floor, but that's up to the building managers and the property managers, who are professionals and who I think would know what they're doing. And if it is a problem, they would learn and not...
But I think with all due respect, I think there is an aesthetic issue here.
Well, they can do that now anyway, though.
They can do...
But we have a bigger, we don't have as many that are doing it right now. If we opened it up to an entire, what, how many level, what are we talking about?
Depends on the building.
So many, right, well, give me one.
21 stories.
21 stories.
550 North Brand.
I mean, you're opening up to all those businesses, so you're, you're absolutely, see, here we go, maybe, probably, could get a lot more.
The reason, the reason that you do not have that many signs today is the landlords, is the owner of the property that doesn't allow just any signage on the property. This will continue, this is only for, because they're leasing two, three, four floors, and they have, they don't have one bousy four-foot sign, that, this is all, that's about, it's not, it's not about having 500 signs on these properties. I think, I want to, you know, it's just the discretion of the landlord to allow a sign or doesn't allow a sign today. And they can allow this many signs that you see, and I think this is a really bad example of presenting this thing, just having this flat, white things planted in there just to show, because this creates a lot of confusions as to how the building will look like in the future. So I think this is a really bad example of it.
Do I, is there a motion on the...
There's, so you want a motion and you want to, I mean, the council member has...
I oppose this measure.
But before I, before I vote, if we're going to somehow limit this in time, frankly, I don't, I don't see it working one way or another.
No, no, we're not limiting in time, just because there are concerns, we said we can, we can get a report back in the future as to how many signs were even applied for in 12 months, that's all. If there are 50 signs applied for on one building and it's going to look like, I don't know, whatever, then you can change the ordinance at that time and say, okay, what we did, it doesn't work.
We're going to tell the tenants, I guess, right? We're going to tell the tenants that you have this option.
No, the tenants are...
Or the landlords? We have this option, but we may revoke this option if it doesn't work out. Is that, I mean, I'm trying to see how...
No, no, that's not what we're saying. It's like any other ordinance, like the Hillside ordinance, like the R1R ordinance, like the residential ordinance, like the multi-residential ordinance. Every ordinance that we have, if there are concerns and there are issues with any of the ordinances because of the developments that was done, it comes back to the council and council just reviews and revisits everything and makes the necessary adjustments. That's all. I mean, I think we are going too deep into this picturing these buildings with 50 different signs on it. I think, I think this was a bad example for it, and it just created a lot of confusion with the council. And the only thing is, the owner of the property will have the, today, don't, I'm sure that some of the tenants on the second floor would want to have a sign, but they did not get it because maybe they don't lease enough space, maybe what have you. It's to the discretion of the landlord to grant the signage or not, that's all.
And what's going to happen?
It's a property right, I mean, you're taking the right away from the property owner to, for the third, it's a discrimination, how come the first or second floor tenant can have it and third or fourth floor tenants cannot have it? That's a direct discrimination.
I'd have to disagree, just based on height.
Agree all you want.
But I would, I would submit to council this, because this was initiated by council and it's gone through planning commission, now it's back before council. To the extent that if Councilmember Friedman had whispered over to me, you know, is the staff worried about this? The staff isn't worried about this so long as we have the ability through the sign program effectively to say no. And to the extent that if the council is prepared and willing and wanting to back up staff as we make those determinations, we really don't have any issue with it until and unless, you know, council says no, you know, you're going to, there's a disconnect between what your expectations are and what the directive is to staff. Respectfully to Mr. Garpetyan, I would say that as we were asked, what is the, what's the worst-case scenario that could be the case today? I mean, that's it. I mean, we don't have mockups necessarily of what the signs would be that would give us a greater aesthetic, but I think this gives you an idea about where those signs can go. We're at this point today, I would hope maybe a compromise is that we do this for a period of time, understanding that if we get this mad rush of signage in and we say, no, that's not appropriate, that the council would support the determinations as they are, and if we do get that mad rush, then perhaps it's time to dial it back. But again, it's a council policy, it's, and you make that policy, so, you know, certainly we abide by that. But I think we do have safeguards in place if this is a road you want to go down. So, I mean, I would just offer you that.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa.
I'll move 7B.
For a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Next item on the agenda, at C is ordinance amending section 30.11.070, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to circular driveways in the ROS R1R and R1 zones, case number PZC 1622217. This was introduced by councilmember Garpetian on November 1st, 2016.
Oh, okay, all right, Mr. Ochoa, or?
Ma'am, this is an item, yeah, that came up, and I believe Mr. Garpetian had indicated to me he wanted to address the matter.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Mr. City Manager. I brought this issue to the council this past spring for two basic reasons. One, first one, I'm a big believer in property rights, and generally speaking, if you own a property and you pay the taxes on the property, then you should have the right, in most cases, to enjoy it as you see fit. I appreciate and understand that neighborhood compatibility has its place in this discussion, and that there is some shared obligation as a community when it comes to land use standards. That said, however, we should not be quick to surrender property rights in this arena of aesthetics, which is on its face extremely subjective. This brings me to my second reason for bringing this matter forward. Too often in Glendale, we have made land use and even permit processing and review policies based on a singular event or discussion or controversy. As a commissioner in different boards and commissions, a private citizen, and a businessman, I personally observed and experienced this dynamic. A project comes along that has some element of controversy, and it generates an overreaction, and we create standards and rules and procedures that are mismatched to the original issue. Rather than be precise in addressing or just talking about issues and solutions, have been too quick to make broad and sweeping policy changes. The issue of circular driveway is a good example, in my opinion. Twenty-five circular drivers were built in 10 years, and based on one, one driveway on Canyada Boulevard, the code was changed. I was hopeful that three other council members would agree with me on this issue. It doesn't appear to be the case, and that is okay. I think I accomplished my basic goal of at least having a public dialogue about these issues. To that end, and seeing as I made the motion to introduce this ordinance, I would now ask to rescind this introduction in the hopes that we continue our productive and friendly dialogue on these themes in the future as other topics come before us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So we're pulling that item.
I would defer Mr. Attorney.
It's, he's withdrawing his motion, and if nobody else makes a motion, we just pull it off calendar.
May I address the item?
Sure.
Don't feel bad, Mr. Garpetian, I want you to know that, that I agree in principle, I agree in principle with some of the standards that you set forth, that there should not be an attempt, a knee-jerk reaction to a singular bad incidence of planning or construction or design. I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. I don't know the entire history on this driveway, we've had a private discussion, and apparently there was one house on Canyada that you feel was the genesis of this. I, I do want to say I saw both sides to this issue, however, the deciding factor for me in not supporting this was that I did not get a lot of input from the community indicating that they wanted the circular driveway within 60 feet, and I do say that at such point in the future that I do begin to receive such input, I will reserve my right to support such a motion and ordinance if you were to reintroduce it.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, councilmember. Najarian?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And you know where I stand.
Thank you.
Well, we all agree to disagree.
Of course.
At times. Okay, next item?
Next item.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm going to assume that Grant Michaels does not want to speak, or would you like to speak on the item? I'm terribly sorry.
Grant is always ready to speak.
Not always, occasionally I'm surprised. My name is Grant Michaels, I'm the president of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. Our discussion on this topic, much like the council here, was large, long, complicated, and I'll simply say, we will work with the council, city, and staff to further discuss the issue and try to come with good solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, next item, please.
Item 70 is an ordinance adopting 2016 California Building Code as volume IA.
We've pulled that one.
That was taken off, thank you. Next item would be action items, and that 8A is city attorney and director of finance regarding amendments to tax administrative director of finance authority to enforce a transient occupancy tax. 8A1 is ordinance for introduction.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is actually a very straightforward item. You know that previously we had done an audit of our hotels to determine the level of transient occupancy tax compliance with the tax as it is on the books, and found at that time, because the language is rather antiquated, that we need to update the language and the authority of the tax collector, the tax administrator, which is effectively the director of finance pursuant to our code. We are asking with this ordinance for introduction that you grant Mr. Elliott and any of his successors the same authority that he has under the utility user tax measure to review, audit, and inspect, and collect levy assessments for late or non-payment on the, in this case, the hotels that are supposed to be collecting and remitting the bed tax that is voter-approved to the city. So no new amount of tax, no authority beyond that which Mr. Elliott already has in the books pursuant to the UUT, it's just standardizing this language along with the UUT language. So if you have any specific questions, certainly Mr. Garcia or Mr. Elliott can address those.
Questions, comments?
Just, just a comment, I mean, there was an instance when we discovered a significant underpayment of the TOT, so this would remedy that by having a dedicated audit group.
And allowing us to do it by third party, and allow us to be much more proactive, so that we don't let things get too far afield.
And require monthly reporting and collection as opposed to quarterly, so it's, anything that happens...
And that's good for the hotelier as well as the city, that way, because some of those folks, they just got, as I say, they ran pretty far afield, and it's become a rather large burden for them to pay the tax that they owe, that they collected. So it's, I think it's in everyone's best interest to be a little more direct with them.
And I think with all the new hotels coming in, this is a really good move.
Yeah. Hey, do we have a motion?
Ordinance just needs introduction.
I introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. Next item?
8B is city attorney regarding cancellation of city council meetings. B1 is motion directing staff to modify the schedule of canceled city council meetings per city council direction, and to provide all required notices. B2 is a motion directing staff to retain the existing schedule of canceled city council meetings as is.
Madam Mayor, members of council, council asked to agendize this to discuss our council meeting schedule, that's been set by council resolution or motion at the beginning of the fiscal year, council wanted to discuss perhaps having a few more council dates, including maybe the 22nd, so I'm not sure if there's any other questions for discussion, but that was, that was the issue we were asked to bring before you.
Okay, Mr. Garpetian?
Yes, if I may. My, I brought this issue up, I think especially for the long weekends, then we have a meeting canceled before and after, if there's a long weekend, Monday is off, I think Tuesday before we should have a meeting, because I don't, I don't go out the entire 10 days, or I don't think any of us do, but I don't know, how does that work with staff time and everything else, and why it was canceled before and after the long weekend, and I think we have to have one of them, because we have a heavy agenda every time and all the time, and I think having more meetings will be to everybody's benefit.
I would tell you that, in terms of getting information into, through all the signatures required for staff reports and the city clerk's office, that really is the genesis behind those back-to-back cancellations. If we are, if the council at this late date were not wanting to reinstate the November 22nd council meeting, I would tell you that the December 20th, 27th, and January 3rd meetings, which make for a large singular block of meetings, those oftentimes occur when many people are out of town for whatever reason, and into the 2017 year, that dynamic where we have the bookended meetings that you were referring to, doesn't occur in 2017, and so what I would suggest to you, that as we set the calendar for council in the 17, 18 fiscal year, if that is the council's directive, then we would find a way, when that occurrence arises, not to do the bookended meeting cancellations, if that's the council's directive.
I think that would be my direction.
I would agree with that. Also, the coming meetings that we, we have, council in our neighborhood, if we can schedule council, I'd suggest that we schedule a council meeting that night instead of, instead of that.
That's, that's an interesting point. On the 6th, we had been looking to do a city council in your neighborhood, looking at the east Glendale neighborhoods, however, in doing that, as you know, we can't do council business, we can't transact council business outside of these chambers, except in case of emergency. That would make the December 13th meeting agenda very long, so if it's council's pleasure, what we would do, and is kind of intimated by Mr. Sinanian, is that in the January, the January meeting, we would have city council in your neighborhood there, possibly on that 17th, that we're dark anyway, and that might work for everyone.
I think that's a great idea, and we can get a report from Mr. Sinanian about his fine trip to Japan.
We can do that, ma'am, so we will be here on, on December the 6th, December the 13th, and plan on a city council in your neighborhood on, I believe, January 17th.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that, Mr. Garcia, or?
8B2 is to retain the existing schedule, but you don't have to do that, if there's no change, then we don't, we can just move forward.
All right, thank you. We can move on to the next item?
Yes, ma'am.
Next item has been taken off calendar, it will return on December 6th. At 8D is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding award contract for sale of power island equipment and services for the proposed repowering of Grayson Power Plant and issuance of a limited notice to proceed to Siemens Energy, Inc. At 1 is, D1 is resolution authorizing city manager or his designate to execute a contract with Siemens Energy, Inc., sale of power island equipment and services for the proposed repowering of the Grayson Power Plant and authorizing the issuance of a limited notice to proceed in an amount of $3,804,000 by design and engineering deliverables necessary for permitting development and specification and analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. At D2 is resolution of appropriating the sum of $3,804,000 from the electrical fund net position account, number 27900-552, to project account number 43110-553-921-13748-UP100.
Thank you. Mr. Councilmember Najarian, if you go first?
I will not be able to participate in the consideration of this item due to a financial interest in one of the entities involved in the, in the power plant repowering RFP. Do I have to say how much my interest is?
You just have to give the ranges on your disclosure, you don't have to do that, you just have to disclose who it is.
Yeah, so I think it's less than $10,000 of common stock owed by, owned in the General Electric Corporation. I'll be recusing myself, and maybe stepping away, if this is not a long item, I might stick, but I don't think you need me for the rest of the evening.
Well, we always need you, sir.
Yeah.
You're just saying that.
Well, we have no hearing, so I will excuse you, Mr. Najarian. Welcome. And I am, I am in the same, the same situation as councilmember Najarian, I do have financial interest in GE, so I have to recuse myself as well.
And I believe councilmember Sinanian is mayor pro tempore.
Sinanian, I will pass the gavel to you.
Oh, there you are. I have a PowerPoint presentation, I will try to make this as quick as possible. I wish for counsel briefings that you've had. You may recall, we've been at this, if you remember, power island equipment, January this year, when council approved the issuance of the RF. As you recall that, process would, one, the limit, fee, phase one. Four, final. Order in 12 months. Yeah. 12 months. That said, to give you a... Final notice to proceed. Somewhere in the... That's when the final... Or three hours would take place.
Just for the viewing audience, please explain what LNTP and FNTP stand for.
And our staff, in operation with Siemens, finalized the secret documents. And then, Mr. Garpetian, following up on your request, the final notice to proceed, which would be, as I said, in May of 2018, would be final decision with both the purchase of the equipment, the total purchase of the equipment, powered Grayson Power Plant.
That would take 12 to 18 months?
Yes, so we're back again in... Back to you to make the decision.
Right, okay, for the second phase. How long would the entire project take?
We'd hope to, if everything went right, we'd be somewhere in 21. Probably closer to 21. Breakdown of the LNTP and FNTP with regards to the financial aspects. Just for, we have two proposals, and we'll see a breakdown of that in a minute, but in this particular case with the recommended vendor Siemens, their limited seed fee was 3.8. You may recall, our estimate at the time, four to five. Came in at the under, the lower, to the far right, you'll notice in parentheses, I put the figure, there are limited notice to proceed. On the final notice to proceed, which is the remaining balance, you will, total proposed amount from Siemens is 155 million, 918,650, and next to that. Again, we attempted to do the best we could, apples-to-apples comparison, it's not working, to make an apples-to-apples comparison, and so this is the number we received, or we came up with. You'll notice GE was slightly under about 2%, but I will tell you, there was a couple of benefits, and you'll see file when we go through some of the total listing of benefits that we felt Siemens offered us, some I'll point out here that are difficult to monitor, difficult to put a dollar figure on, but a two-year bumper-to-bumper warranty, my term, all equipment included, from time of operation of the facility. Hard to put a dollar figure on it, but it's a very valuable. Also, Siemens has made a commitment, Siemens US facilities are on the East Coast, Florida, they've made a commitment to have parts available here, especially major parts, which, very big deal, that means we don't have to ship. That can be very, very costly. And the third thing is, is that one of the pieces of equipment that Siemens is offering is advanced technology, at least in the... Whereas permitting process also allows you to have offset credits, monetary value. Whereas permitting process also allows you to have offset credits, monetary value. You know, we didn't add into there, we tried to keep as much as we could apples to apples, but those all have a value. And, and that's part of what, what convinced the, the team that we have, our staff and Stan Tech, our owners. This is the best way for us to go.
So one quick question. So the initial, can you go back to the same slide? So the initial commitment cost, G was almost two point eight million dollars or two point seven million dollars more. But the total cost, G is like three million dollars less. Is there a reason why, or do we?
Well, generally, their equipment runs a little bit less in the total, but you're going to see in a minute that a critical figure, cost per kilowatt. Proposed or RFP, we indicate that would be a critical factor. Cost, and you can see our total cost is very close again. Range that we had given, one fifteen to one hundred. When we get down to what it means of a lower price per kilowatt, that's very critical, because kilowatt is on what we sell. You'll see when we, when we get there, what that difference is and what that translates. Recommending is two combined cycle units and two simple cycle units. I'll start at the bottom. Simple cycle units, gas powered turbines. They are sometimes called run. They, they start very quick, they fire up quick, they get the maximum potential very quick. They're often used to produce electricity on a short-term basis for load, hot, when you begin. Might have a, for instance, a transmission line. Power isn't coming in the way you thought it was because there's out. I've affected that. The, the simple cycle units fire quick, they get up front. The combined cycle units are essentially that same gas turbine engine, but on the other end of that, you capture the steam, the steam at the other end. That's why you see the difference of a hundred megawatts for the two simple cycles, and a hundred and fifty megawatts total for the two combined By, by capturing. Now, the difference there is, these units take a lot longer to fire up. They are much more suited to continuous operation. They're your workhorses. That's what. Your system running on a day-to-day basis. But in combination, and again, all are familiar with the recommendation that was made there. Evaluation criteria when we took a look at the proposals, flexibility, the heat rate, run on, and that's. The industry. Price add. Cost of producing electricity is high. Get to the lower rate. The technical permitting and commercial risks on the legal side of, in our, in our contracts, and certainly Ms. Godinas could speak to that. I think we, she was very satisfied with how that worked out. And then cost, both total cost and cost for per kilowatt. Again, we did fatal flaw reviewing technical, commercial exceptions that were taken, performance reflection requirement, responsiveness to the RFP, you know, whether the loads would be the requirements we needed, and the heat rates in our dispatch model, and, and on our owner's engineers, Stan Tech did all of this technical work by putting these models, modeling the various, in various scenarios that we were given. And then the resulting operating hours used, calculate the various costs and credits that operating a plant like this. Capital costs, we, in an attempt to keep this as even, even as possible. Both, or, or we, or we added or removed gas, I should have just stayed at my seat, gas compressor costs, so that we could try to equate this as much as possible. And then here we get in blue is to that critical point I was mentioning. That was the cost per kilowatt. And that's where we said this was going to be where we would take a long, hard look. And you can see there, Siemens was five forty per kilowatt, GE's five eighty two. Now you're going to say, dollars, what does that mean? Like a lot. If you looked at Grayson, based on what our projection, very conservative projection of forty percent time.
Forty percent.
Operational time. Look at that, based on the kilowatt hours produced, what that forty two dollars equates to? Five point seven million a year. At forty two dollars. Factor when we looked at.
And what is the life expectancy of these units?
Well.
Twenty-five years, thirty years? I know our Grayson is like forty years, but.
I was going to make a joke and say.
That's a dinosaur.
You know, I think you're looking at, at units that can, that can clearly go in that thirty, forty year range.
So it's thirty years.
Obviously, a lot longer than that. But I think that, that, you know, taking care of these units being how we run them, that you're going to get a long life out of these.
So it's thirty years with five point five million, it would be almost one hundred and eighty million dollars, or one hundred and sixty five million dollars.
It's very substantial. And I, and as I said, that's a conservative, forty percent. We think we can run this plant more like fifty percent. That would be our hope, but we, to, to kind of work that out, on how to plant in a long, long time that could run at that, at that capacity.
And since we're, we're on the issue of the longevity of the technology that we're using, I, I do want to talk about the technology and whether we even need this type of turbine engine, considering that, I mean, technology's changing, and you're hearing about all these new things happening, and Silicon Valley people are coming out with all kinds of, you know, photovoltaic tiles and for the roofs and so on and so forth. So do we have a clear understanding that thirty years from now, we're still going to require gas-powered electricity generation?
Mr. Sinanian, I think the best answer to that today is, at least, and we've called it generate, at least for another generation, you're going to gas-fired plants as being necessary. Though people will tell you they aren't, you know, people that want to compete with the traditional electrical business. But if, if you look at the, at the country as a whole, but especially here in California with renewables, and as again, in our, in our integrated resource plant, a lot of focus on when you solve it. Those are unpredictable sources of power, good sources of power, but unpredictable. You can't deliver that to a home. No matter where it is, even, even our, we recently, Skyler.
So truly, this may end up being the, the final generation of, of this type of technology, because in thirty years, things may be different, but we have to get to that thirty-year window. And so, you know, that's where I think this purchase comes in.
And, and just to follow up, not simply resting on our laurels and sitting on that, this, our proposed footprint includes a facility that can house up to twenty megawatts of battery storage. So we are beginning to look at what that next generation is. And it may be batteries that replace gas for firming, but we're going to incorporate that in much sooner as part of our overall plan.
Okay. And what is the cost today per kilowatt? The one that we?
Mr. Garpetian, I, I do not know, but I can tell you that generally speaking, I don't know if we've broken it down to a kilowatt, but on a megawatt basis, the current Grayson is the most expensive of generation in our portfolio.
Because it's old technology.
It's old. Heat rate is, as you may recall, the heat rate, which is a critical factor, is very high. It's the reason we only run it on a very much ad. And just, just a quick recap. We received nine proposals, and actually, it was two proposals, five options in. One, one did five, Siemens did four. They then were able presentations, formal presentations to our team. Obviously, we were looking at some different options that were a little bit out of the box, but weren't quite prime time, at least as it applied. So we got down to, to essentially four proposals, two, both of them that same. Cycle units, it just was. We negotiated with both firms, up until a point, as you, as you. But in August of this year, they're going through some very critical, we made it not to telling GE that we were going to do, that did not work out, we would come back to GE. But at that point, we had felt from a technical standpoint, an operational standpoint, a cost standpoint, that Siemens was the best bet for, for city. In our evaluation summary, this is just a checklist of things that, that we felt put Siemens ahead. Best value and lowest cost based on the per kilowatt cost, the two-year warranty on all equipment. They had virtually no exceptions, exceptions to the commercial, legal, and technical. Extremely responsive to, to the RFP. Those torrent units, which are the, that's in their configuration, are the advanced technology turbines. Their combined cycle unit, which is a combined cycle unit, combined cycle unit versus a simple cycle unit converted into a combined cycle. They've already been permitted. Success in our permit. Again, the L N T P, that limit, C P is below us. Estimate even. Siemens has been absolutely above professional in, in dealing with them as far as negotiations, their responsiveness, their following instructions, the interview process. It's, it's been quite a, actually, as far as negotiations go, which are never always easy, and sometimes can be extremely frustrating, it's, it's been a rather positive experience, I think, on both sides. We limited the liquidated damages in the contract. This is just something simply a necessary evil that you have in contracts. Neither side wants to see them have to go to, to liquidated damages, and they usually become a, a source of contention. But I think we came to an agreement between the two, the city and Siemens, that this was what was in our best interest. Try it one more time. And there's one point here, and it's a little, it may be, you know, splitting hairs a bit, but in dealing with Siemens, you're dealing with a single entity and a single point of contact. Although they have numerous operating units within their, their company, you deal with one. And, and this is something that we found when we were negotiating and seeing presentations. The other company has a number of wholly owned subsidiaries that still operate as, as companies. And there, and there was a couple of times when there was an agreement between the parent company, it didn't appear to be agreement between the parent company and one of the, the subsidiaries. And that, that caused us a little bit of concern. And then the units, the two units, those last two checkmarks, extremely efficient, as I said, it went through the modeling process, are very talented technical staff, both in-house and, and Stan Tech's group led by Carl Haas did a great job, and I feel extremely comfortable with this. And, and these are the core reasons why we're, we're making the recommendation we are tonight. And just some pictures for a little bit of show and tell. I know you've all been down to the plant. This is the way it looks today. You see that core, the core operation is, is towards the freeway. This is the, the silhouetted footprint of where we would be doing the, the bulk of the repowering. The rest of those are operational buildings, our airway rack, and some of those that won't be affected. And the peaker, that's right. Mr. Ochoa, very good. As you'll see, the little cutout on that silhouette to the left, which is unit nine, our unit nine, which as you know, we proposed to keep.
Yeah, keep. So let me ask you about the, the footprint. It was my impression that the repowering would result in a smaller footprint.
It is, Mr.
Is that still the case? I mean, I, I know that it's too hard, it's, it's hard to know right now, and after they've done the, sort of the engineering and the planning for it, we'll know for sure. But is that still the case with this?
If you, Mr. Sinanian, if you did it on a, on a, a generating unit by generating unit, yes, that would be the case. But of course, a couple of things come into play. You know, this facility was built a long, long time ago. So fire access and maintenance access has changed quite a bit. So the access in between structures has, has widened. Not to mention, we've decided to go ahead and take advantage and add some things, such as the twenty megawatt battery. Another thing that we want to do, this is Mr. Abueg, and I think it's an excellent idea, is we have a Kellogg rack that sits out by the wall next to the railroad tracks. That is a very critical rack. If something were to happen to that, we would be in a lot of trouble, because most of the energy flows through there. He's proposing that we build a secondary backup rack in the back of the structure, and I think that's an excellent idea. So that'll take up some more space. So the footprint in general.
Sorry, where is that at?
The, if, if you look, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll use the mouse.
So here's where the area where the rack is now. And this is the railroad tracks in San Fernando Road. And we want to put another backup unit back here in this area. So it's directly on the opposite side of that.
So you're going to have two?
We'll have two. They'll both be functional, but they'll provide each other the redundancy we need to ensure that if one goes out, the other's available. Because right now, we're, you know, and again, you know, what's, what chances are, but I, I will tell you, we've had a lightning strike at the plant within the last four years. We've had a lightning strike across the street in the alley. So, you know, some, something as simple as that could put you out of business and, and make things a little bit difficult, especially for certain areas of the city. So again, Mr. Sinanian, just taking advantage of some of that extra space by, by upgrading other parts of our, our operation. And then these are just some, some three Ds of what the new equipment would look like. So you've got the two simple cycle units towards the, the left of the screen and two combined cycle units up on top. You see the cooling towers have been reduced significantly from what our cooling towers are today. And so this, this, Mr. Sinanian, is probably more footprint for footprint. Now, we've added a bunch of things in between, in between there, but you can see that this is a lot less equipment and a lot smaller than what we have today.
So the gray area is the current one?
Yes, it would go at least that far. So some of those outlined areas you see, that isn't the actual generated equipment, but it will be other equipment or battery storage buildings, or compressor units, or our operations building. And then this is just another view. And, and the units look, the simple cycle units look very similar to our unit nine. So that gives you some idea. And then here's kind of a little pitch, a photo from the other side. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have. Again, let me just recap. Tonight is the limited notice proceed and three point eight million dollars. That will get us on our, our way to doing a number of things. Now, I mentioned the, the critical issue there is getting the permitting done for, for the units. At the same time, we're going to be also doing the SEQA, finishing that. But thirdly is, is digging into the financial part of it, so that by the time we come back to you, if not sooner, we will have laid out what the cost impacts are, how that relates into our rate structure, what financing options are available to us. And as you know, we have our, our bond counsel and our financial analyst firm on, on board already. So we're going to be digging in heavily into that during.
Just to make sure I understood you correctly, this amount is going to include the preparations for the financials? I mean, for?
That, no, not the amount that you see there. We've, we've already set money aside for that.
Right.
And we have that covered, and it was approved by council through a competitive process.
Okay.
So that's already being taken care of, and we'll be doing that simultaneously. Just wanted to, to recap that. So again, tonight, three point eight million dollars and approval to proceed with the limited notice to proceed.
Okay. So I have a bunch of questions for you. And you've, you've actually covered these issues, but since some constituents have, you know, voiced their concern, and I think we'll just stress, I think, these important points. First of all, the, the offer from GE for the, for the commitment, L N T P was six point, almost six and a half million as opposed to the three point eight million by Siemens, correct?
Correct.
The Siemens commitment includes a two-year warranty. I know you said two-year warranty, but can you specify, it's actually a two-year warranty after installation? And is that correct?
Correct. It's a two-year. It's a two-year warranty covering all parts.
All parts.
All parts, and equipment included. And it begins ticking once we have, the equipment has all been deemed working and as we ordered. So, I call it operational.
Right.
From operation.
And the GE warranty was how long?
What was proposed was one year.
From when?
On the turbines, and at that time, it was based upon delivery.
Okay, so it was only on the turbines, not all parts, and based on, you know, upon delivery? So, the moment they dump it off on the site, that's it, the warranty starts ticking.
Correct.
And, you know, equipment of that size could take god knows how long to install and make operational, correct?
Correct.
So, technically, the warranty could run out before we even power it up?
Could, unless we were to spend extra on an extended warranty. That was, Jim, was a concern.
The $3.8 million commitment from Siemens will count towards, assuming we move forward with the repowering of Grayson, towards the proposed PIE of $155.9 million.
Correct. So, if you were to proceed with the final notice to proceed, you would subtract that 3.8 from that 155 that's on your presentation, and you'd go from there. That's the total cost, not.
Right. So, there was an issue which I, honestly, I can't see how it could be an issue, but nevertheless, let's talk about it a little bit. And the statement that was made was that Siemens did not have the proper equipment, sort of this type of turbine engine, prior to their purchase of Rolls-Royce. But apparently, they have purchased Rolls-Royce, and they do, and other than for, you know, these hurrah patriotic reasons by American, I haven't seen a really good reason or a good explanation as to why we should go with GE as opposed to Siemens, just because Siemens is a German company and they've purchased a British company, Rolls-Royce.
And we agree with you, Mr. Sananian. And we have Mr. Linder from Siemens here, but I can quickly go through and tell you, they've been a company since 1847, they've been building gas turbines since 1939. Yes, they acquired Rolls-Royce, as a lot of big companies do. They also, what that sheet didn't indicate is, they acquired Westinghouse in 1998. So, as General Electric has acquired numerous companies, Mitsubishi has acquired Hitachi, the bigger firms sometimes get bigger, and they mesh that technology. And quite frankly, you know, my opinion is, now you're getting even more technology enhancements and options when these companies come together. But believe me, Siemens has been producing electrical power generation equipment for a long, long time.
And in terms of servicing this engine or the parts, apparently, they're willing to open a servicing center in the general.
Correct. They have indicated that they are going to, at a minimum, have the critical parts, turbines, drive trains, and those kind of things located here in the Southern California area, which is great for us.
Okay. So, I'll just say that despite the fact that GE's final value of 150, almost $3 million is less than the, than Siemens's 150, almost $156 million amount, I believe that going with Siemens is the correct way to go, because the warranty, I think, is crucial. B, because the LNTP amount is almost half of what GE is offering. And given the fact that no final decision has been made by this council to actually repower Grayson, and we could move forward, and at the end of the day, decide that repowering Grayson is not something that's right for Glendale, I mean, the potential loss that we will have incurred is half of what we will have incurred with the GE amount. Given their cooperation, apparently, they really want to be in Glendale. They want to be, you know, they want to foothold here, so they've cooperated greatly with our staff. And the fact that their servicing center is going to be in the general, in the Los, greater Los Angeles area, I think this is the right way to go, and I agree with staff's recommendation that we should go with Siemens.
Thank you. Just, I'm going to be brief. I agree with my colleague and all the terms that he indicated, as well as the cost per kilowatt. That's, that is a $5.5 million a year. Also, what I would suggest is maybe look into, what would it cost the city to maybe purchase extended warranty on this equipment? Just to have it on our books, because two years is not a very long time for such a huge investment, and I think we need to look into having the extended warranty as well if we're moving forward at that time.
We can do that.
And I agree that we need to move forward with Siemens.
So, if someone, I mean, unless anyone else has comments, if you'll move the item and second it?
I move the.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian. Mayor Devine, and Mayor Protem Sananian.
Yes. Next item, please.
There are no other items, although no cards for oral communication. Is there any new business?
There is new business, yes, I have new business. I move that the city attorney and thereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the Bill H. Seki and Sekin Nishimura and Watase LLP to assist the city attorney on a legal matter. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to otherwise provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Is there a second?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Of state.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian. Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item?
Next item is just a motion to adjourn.
Who will adjourn? Who adjourn?
Second.
Good night.